Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting for Grand Blank Township. If we could all rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Union, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Clerk Robertson, could you call the roll, please?
I would be happy to. Trustee Hugo?
Here.
Trustee Fike?
Here.
Trustee Raridan?
Here.
Trustee White?
Here.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Here.
Myself, of course, I'm here. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven members present, a quorum.
Thank you. And at this time, I'll seek a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, motion by trustee Fike, supported by trustee White.
Motion by Fike, supported by White. Very good. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Okay. At this time, we will open the floor for public comments. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and if you want to provide your name and address, that will help us for the record. Anybody wish to make public comment this evening? Please come forward. Good evening.
Hi.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Barb Wetzel. I'm a resident of Concord Green subdivision. I'm addressing the, my objection to the proposed special refinancing district to finance the resurfacing of roads within our Concord Green subdivision. I respectfully would ask you to vote no on that resolution. We were not contacted to vote on this petition claiming a 51% approval for the SAD, nor were neighbors we know of talked to with regarding this matter. We would have voted no. We don't feel, or don't know of any effort, real effort made to contact residents. We don't know of any letter that was sent out in this matter. Our second objection is we just don't feel our streets need resurfacing at this time, and that this project can be put off and money used for more urgent needs in a time of such extreme inflation and economic insecurity that many families are experiencing. We find this to be especially disconcerting and kind of a disregard for our economic feelings in the residents of Concord Greens, well, I feel for myself. Third, and probably our most concerning concern, work done on other streets in Concord Green in recent years, probably, maybe it was 2019 they were done, is subpar at best. And we fear, and we don't know where the board is going with what, who they're going to use, but if they're going to use this same company to do the work, that would be very unacceptable. If past performance is an indicator of that company's ability, then a brief tour of our subdivision is all that would be needed to make this point. Roads done in the past three years have already needed and had extensive repairs to both the tar and the concrete work that was done. So both those companies, if it was two different companies, did not do very good work. They look horrible. We go walking and walking our dogs very often in those roads, very, very bad shape. We fear they might hire the same firm to do the work in front of our home, and that's not something I want to pay for. I mean, $483, almost $500 a month, that's two round trip airline tickets, that's a concert and a hotel, that's Christmas gifts for kids every year, that's a lot of money for 10 years. We want, we would like to know who is the company that resurfaced those roads and what is the status of any future repairs and/or refunds that, the work to those residents who paid for those for 10 years. Furthermore, we've not seen any information on the board's methods for attaining contract bids. How do they announce going out to bid? How many bids do they consider? Do they require a bond? And are bids opened publicly or privately, et cetera? How do they access the reliability of possible contractors? And we'd like to have some information on what guarantees would come relating to the quality of the work and length of guarantees if this is going to move forward at some point. Given all the information we outlined above, we would urge you to please vote no on this SAD for Concord Green. Again, I'm reading this letter on behalf of myself and my husband, Barb and George Wetzel, we're at 5209 Kimberly Drive, Grand Blank, in the Concord Green subdivision. Thank you.
We'll be talking about that a little bit later in the meeting and answer some of those questions for you. Anybody else wish to make a public comment? Yes, come on forward. Want to give us your name and address for the record? That'd be helpful. I'm sorry? Okay. If you can speak right into the microphone, that'd be great.
Grand Blank, Michigan.
Your first name?
Linda and William Hamilton. Okay, well, I'm going to say no to it, because that street, that really messed up, is just need, I think, repair done. Then I have a neighbor, Mary Jane, who live next door to me, she cannot afford it. They've been, living there for over 44-something years, and Rollin Street in the back of us, that street, that were real, they really need that street repaired. But if we have to pay it, I'd rather do the yearly, the $4.35 a month, if that's, you know, over 51%. And, but I understand that the roads have to be done, but I thought our taxes paid for the road, because we, I've been there since 2007, so, and I'm new to this, so, you know, anything that you can give me information on, I'm okay with it. Like I said, we, I'd rather do the $4.35 a year than have my house payment go up. So that is our concern. And the elderly too, that live in our area, and watch out and look out for them, because they can afford it. Thank you.
We'll address those concerns when we get to that on our agenda. Thank you. Would anybody else like to make a public comment? Don't be afraid of us. Okay, I see no further public comment, so at this time, we'll close public comment and bring it here to the board. And at this time, I would like Chief Perdott or Deputy Chief Miracle, which one of you are going to be making the presentation? Deputy Chief, okay.
First off, thank you guys for letting us take this opportunity to recognize the guys that have moved up.
Absolutely.
And thank the families for showing up tonight, that's, I think that's great. It's kind of a special time for the fire department. This is the start of our leadership succession plan, when we put it together for even like the strategic plan, one of them was better leadership and where it's going to come from. So, we put it together, and the four members promoted to the rank of Sergeant today will be the future leaders of the department. This time, I wanted to ask Adam Frank, Michael Hertzberg, Jake Haller, and Martin Sorensen, please come up with your family members that you've chosen. She'll stand over. A little bit. You can go ahead and pin them. Does he hear ouch? That's why I say that you guys have all went through the process, and you all proven that you're ready to proceed and go on to the next step. You know, the role is, it's going to be challenges, but also many rewards when it comes along with it, because you guys are going to be responsible for not only the safety of your members, but the growth and development of the department moving forward. So, just want to say congratulations and.
Well. Our board would also like to congratulate each of you on this achievement, and we have lots of great things with our fire department going on. You know, it's, it's been a quick trip in that, with us having our own fire department being established here a couple of years ago. I know we've been in transition, and we're looking forward to Fire Station Number Two being renovated and building a completely new fire station here shortly.
Congratulations. Good work.
Let's give these guys another round of applause. In fact, it looks like we have half the fire department here, so we want to say thanks to all of you for your hard work as well. We're, like I said, we're in some exciting times in that we voted a couple meetings ago to do a one and a half million dollar renovation for Station Number Two. Started out at, what, $400,000? But, and building a completely brand-new fire station just short ways from here on our property. So that's going to be real exciting. I think we're going to hear a little bit about that tonight, but we're very proud of our firefighters and our fire department and our leadership, and we look forward to some great things here in the next couple of years with our new buildings. Mr. Lehman, anything?
No, we're really grateful for the board's support through all of this, because, I mean, it's been a transition. These guys in front of you here have made that possible from our joint fire department and, you know, transitioning into township, moved into less-than-ideal headquarters here a few years ago, and with the idea that we were going to be able to get them into the new one within a couple of years, well, a lot happened, including a pandemic. But the board has continued to show that support, provided that financial support. Us building the new station and then retrofitting the second, you know, Station Number Two is such a huge deal, and these, we have an amazing fire department, we have an amazing group of guys and gals here who are, you know, do such a great job for the township. We really expect good things, and this is part of this big reorganization that these guys have been working on for over a year, you know, going back to early last year, 2021, and through this year, and this is kind of a culmination. So it took a lot longer, sorry, guys, than we hoped it would, but this is a culmination, and, you know, these guys didn't just get handed these, they were tested for them, they went through the interview process in order to earn this rank, and there was other guys who were in that process, you know, came close. But it is really exciting time for this department. So thank the board for the support.
Very good. Well, thanks, everyone. We appreciate what you do for our township, and thanks to your families, because I know it's some sacrifice there too with the hours and what have you. So, thank you to all of you. So, all right. Okay. You're welcome to stick around for the rest of our board meeting, it's going to be exciting.
Somehow, I don't think they were here to see us.
Now, we're left with all the people that really wanted to see us.
Put up too many chairs.
Yeah. So, we have a public hearing at this point in our board meeting, and regarding Concord Green Special Assessment District. Who would like to start out here? Mr. Laddie?
Well, this is another one of our, our special assessment district processes that we've been engaged in several times over the last couple of years, and tonight, we're at this stage where the notifications have been sent out to the residents, but also published in the paper, following the submission of a petition that showed that more than 51% of the property owners with frontage on the roads in the subdivision are in support of the project. And the notifications indicated that, as you heard some of the comments tonight, I think that the proposed, the latest estimate was, I think, $602,500. And you heard some residents talk about if they had to be a part of the district, then they would like to spread that payment out, and as you know, people have the option, if we do decide, if you do decide to go forward tonight, and then if we do decide to adopt the role at a subsequent public hearing, then residents will have their opportunity to pay either upfront or to pay in 10 equal installments. And I know that Mr. Sears was working rather intensely on the petitions, but also with the Road Commission to try to get the best estimates that he could. And Mr. Sears, you, I think the latest estimate was $602,500, and I, maybe folks want to hear a little bit about the scope of work.
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, yeah, the latest estimate that we got, which was early summer this year, was for around $600,000 to resurface most of the roads in Concord Green. A couple of years ago, a portion of the subdivision was reconstructed, probably the southernmost streets, Fairview, Plymouth, and I think that's it. Those were not part of an original repaving project that happened several years ago. The roads that are resurfacing were reconstructed maybe 15, 20 years ago, I don't have the exact date on that. So those roads now are being resurfaced, and it's a really good maintenance idea to do a project like this. We've had a couple that have been completed recently, Grand Wailea is one, and basically, what that's going to do is it's going to avoid a reconstruction project, you know, if we waited another 15 years, that could develop. So, right now, the roads may not be laden with potholes, there are some, I've driven through there, there is some alligator cracking that we call it, which are really fine cracks throughout the pavement, and it's definitely time to look at a project like this. So, basically, what will happen from here, we'll adopt this resolution, there'll be another public hearing when we confirm the special assessment role. The Road Commission is going to design the project, and the Road Commission will go out for bid and award the bid on the project.
Yeah, so just to clarify, because I know we had some questions regarding this, actually, township does not own streets or roads or ditches or culverts, signage, all that is owned in townships by the Genesee County Road Commission, and that's the case in all townships in Michigan. Cities have their own roads, what have you, but townships, the county actually owns those. And so this project, the only involvement that the township has is basically borrowing the money, because we can put it on people's property tax, the county can't, but we can. And so basically, the county road commission does the work, we borrow the money, and we seek repayment by putting it on the taxes. So that's our involvement, pretty much. As far as the construction standards, all that, that's up to the county. They bid it out, so whether or not it'll be the same construction company as did this project that they mentioned before, who knows? I guess if they bid on it, they could. Any thoughts on, there was some mention that there was a project that was done that was substandard or something like that?
Well, like I mentioned a few minutes ago, there's a reconstruction project that included just a portion of the subdivision, and there was a company that did that project, the Road Commission awarded the bid and supervised that project like they always do. And I know there were some, some issues with the construction of those roads. So, you know, the township has been performing the crack sealing on the roads like we do with every special assessment district, and it's not, unfortunately, the prettiest product that we've seen. But the Road Commission is well aware of that, and they take a lot of time to vet these contractors now, so I don't fear anything with them selecting another contractor like that. A lot's changed in the past few years, so, you know, I think we'll see a good.
And the reconstruction versus paving, I take it that if we, and my understanding is if we pave it, or the county does, you know, every 15, 20 years saves having to reconstruct, which would probably be triple or quadruple this price.
That's correct. The difference is with the reconstruction, they're coming in, they're ripping out all the pavement, they're ripping out the existing aggregate base, and they're replacing everything. With this project, they're just resurfacing it, so they're going to come through, they're going to mill off, I don't have the estimate in front of me, two or three inches of asphalt, and then they're going to replace it with a new layer of two or three inches of asphalt.
In terms of taxes going towards streets, just for the public's knowledge, none of your property taxes go towards streets or roads anywhere, for the state, for, for the county, locally, none of it. Basically, your gas tax and your vehicle registrations and federal funds are what go towards streets and roads, and that money is handled by the county, by the county road commission. So, when you look at your property tax that you get from Grand Blank Township, you won't see anything on there for roads or streets. The smallest majority of it comes to the township, we get less than 17%, comes back here to the township to provide everything we provide, the bulk of it goes to everybody else, and none of it is for streets or roads. So that, that's why we have to pay for our own streets. Any other questions that we heard, Jeff? And we figured that it'd be about $4.35 annually, is that what we're thinking?
Annually, yes.
Somewhere in that ballpark?
Four and thirty-five, that's $4,000.
It wouldn't be $4,000 a year? No.
The drive isn't working, so I can't access it.
No, I think, I think the estimate for, I think there are 139 properties, and I thought that the per, per property estimate was $4,334.
Correct.
Spread over 10 years, though.
Spread over 10 years.
Right, if you spread it over 10 years, then you got a $433 payment. These are estimates, and they don't, they don't include any interest payments.
Right. And there is a hardship exemption that you can apply through the county or whatever, if somebody is destitute or...
There has been opportunities in the past for community development block grant funds, and residents can apply directly through those.
Okay, right. Mr. Fike, and then Mr. Robert.
The lady, Barb, mentioned that she didn't get a notice. Is, did we mail a notice to everybody?
We mailed notices for the public hearings. As far as the petition drive, that's up to the volunteer residents to circulate those and to get the word out.
Got it. So basically, it's not a requirement that they go to every single door. When they get 51%, they can stop going door-to-door.
That's correct.
You know, the, Ms. Sarah did in her neighborhood, you know, spent a summer trying to get, go to every single door in her neighborhood. These people are volunteers that do this, and so sometimes they don't get around every single door. It's unfortunate, but they're not getting paid for it, and when they hit 51%, probably most of them stop.
And they actually got closer to 65%.
Did they really? So when we're considering this as a board, that's the other thing, is when you have 65% of the residents saying they want the street paved, it's a little bit difficult for us to say we're not going to listen to them. Clerk Robertson?
Two things. First of all, just want to mention for the record that at 3:59 this afternoon, I did receive an email from George and Barb Wetzel, and I've got it here, okay? And, and it's, it is, and I'll make certain that it is part of the record for the, for the hearing and that. Also, refresh my memory, but we've talked about the availability of Road Commission funds and the 10% and the 10% match, and is that part of the equation here?
That is not actually part of this equation right now. That estimate is pre the matching funds that were developed. So, whatever the contract price ends up being, the board wishes to choose, to use the matching fund policy that the Road Commission developed, that'll come off of that contract price. So, $600,000 for this project is probably on the high end of the estimate, hopefully. The market has changed since the estimate was developed by the Road Commission, so it would be whatever, the 10%, $60,000 from each jurisdiction off of that project, so $20,000 off.
For those in attendance and those listening, there is the potential, and I want to emphasize potential, that it could end up being less.
Correct.
Yes.
If we make that decision.
Well, and if there's funds available.
And if there's funds available, so.
Right, from the county and us. Yes, Treasurer Kilmer?
This gentleman here had a question, and I, did we answer it or not? The...
Yeah, yeah, we've had, I don't know if we haven't addressed the question, what I do ask you to do is to bring it to Mr. Sears, and I'm sure he can...
It's a public hearing, so.
You're going to go into a public hearing, and they can...
Okay. We have a public hearing here in a minute, and we can do it then.
And I've asked this before, but for whatever reason, it escapes me. So, it, we have, if they wanted to do their counter petition, is that what it...
Counter petition.
Counter petition, or...
Yeah, so that's, the counter petition is if the board decided to go ahead without the benefit of that 51% petition. And so if we, if we have accepted the 51, more than 51% petition, if you acknowledge that tonight and decide to move forward, there's no opportunity for a counter petition.
And you said it was 65%?
Mr. Sears said it was closer to 65%.
That's a pretty strong percentage, Jeff.
So, let's go ahead and do the public hearing and see if there's any other comments. So, we are going to open public, the public hearing, correct? And anybody that would like to comment specifically on the roads, come on up to the microphone, and if you want to provide your name and address, we will hear your comments. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tamara Rothermell, and I reside at 1472 Rollin Street. I can answer a couple of the questions, because I was one of the people that canvassed, I had 20 homes, they were divided up between various residents in the subdivision. I went over a course of a couple different weekends to those 20 homes. Thirteen of the 20 homes signed my petition. Seven people either did not want the roads done, or one of the homes of those seven is a vacant home that's listed as being condemned. Another one of the homes was a rental home, and I went to this home three times trying to get the people that rented the home to contact the homeowner, to phone me, so I could have a discussion with them and see if they would be willing to sign the petition. And the other one was just, like I said, people that said no. So, you can see from my 13 homes out of 20, I had a very good percentage. Now, the two people that spoke earlier, I hope they have a clear understanding now of the cost, it's not $435 a month, that's the annual fee, because, like you said, it's a $4,000, almost $4,400 for a 10-year assessment. So hopefully, they'll have a better understanding of what the fee was. But we provided all that information, and I've been a Concord Green homeowner for 39 years. In 1998, it was the first assessment that we had to have the roads resurfaced. So next year, that will be 25 years since we've done anything to those roads, and they need to be done, so I hope the board will move forward. I have the same concerns that these people have expressed, and I vow that I will fight to make sure that we have a better job than what was done at the back of the subdivision. Whoever the contractor was, it was deplorable, there seems to have been no oversight, no accountability, no responsibility, and we just want to be assured, I don't mind paying to have my roads done, and I'm sure the rest of the people won't, but we want to be assured that we get a good contractor and that somebody is going to be accountable, because those roads are absolutely ridiculous. And believe me, if I had lived on those streets, I would have gone door-to-door getting homeowners to come to whatever meetings we had to on a weekly basis until somebody fixed their egregious job, because it is that bad. And, well, that's just my feelings about it. Does anybody have any questions on the board about my responsibility?
No.
Or anything that I can answer for you?
Only that you're to be commended for, you know, going through all this, going door-to-door, on your own, volunteer, you know, Sarah did that one time in her subdivision, I'm sure she can tell you that it's, it can be a lot of work, you know?
Roads are beautiful now. My roads are beautiful now. Oh, well, I'm glad, I'm glad you got a good job. But anyways, so I hope the board will move forward with the petition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments with regard to this public hearing? Any other comments with regard to this public hearing? Come on up to them.
Come up to my table.
Yes. If you could give us your name and address.
George Wetzel. Barb's husband, fifty-two oh nine. So, uh, so I didn't understand that, that the, the city is not the one contracting, like the...
Township, no. Township, county.
So whoever is the contact then with the county, I think they should look at this job that, that was just done like three years ago. And it's just terrible. I, I mean, and that is my fear, not necessarily like the, the four hundred bucks or five hundred bucks. But I do not want to pay and then I come out. And, because technically, my street is pretty good right now. But they, but like they had that thing blocked for about two weeks back there. And it's just terrible. I mean, it's like, somebody got paid for work that they should not have got paid for. And somebody needs to bring the county out to say, hey, I, I mean, this is not acceptable for this repaving job, that's all, so.
I'm sure we'll have some conversation with, with the road commission on that.
Good evening. It's Ricardo Alfaro from fourteen sixty Hanley Drive.
Good evening.
Your last name, sir?
Alfaro.
A-L-F-A-R-O.
Okay.
I'm the treasurer of the Concord Green Homeowners Association. I also went through houses and houses, canvassing. Some houses didn't answer, some houses, they were really in favor of the project. What I would like to ask is, and I don't know if you guys can or not, but since it's the Genesee County Road Commission who's doing the project, if there is a way who, there, there is a direct communication between also the person in, in, who's in charge of the project from the Genesee County Road Commission and the Homeowners Association Board. Because we can reach to this, to our neighbors, they can reach us. And any kind of concern during the, during the work, we can direct directly to the Genesee County Road Commission rather than having to go through township or call here or there. So if we can get a, a direct conversation between the Genesee County Road Commission and the, and the Homeowners Association, I think that would help both sides, us bringing some concerns that we have and then solving them on time.
Mr. Sears, will they have a project manager that we can put in touch with the homeowners association? So we can, we'll have a construction manager from, Mr. Sears will help coordinate getting them in touch with you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thanks. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Good evening.
Yeah, to excuse my voice.
Oh, that's okay.
Jill Wagner, fourteen thirty-five Rollins Street. My dad's here since they'd been nineteen sixty-six in the subdivision. Two questions. Energy cost or timeframe? If this passes, when is the scheduled timeframe? Is it next year or a couple of years? And then energy cost, oil product, would that change?
The cost?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Sears?
So it will be a twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three construction project. We've hit it just in time where the road commission can design it over the winter and then bid at late winter, early spring to get the best possible pricing. Obviously, right now with the market the way it is, with oil prices and everything else, it's hard telling what's going to happen with the price of petroleum, which obviously is a big ingredient in asphalt. Right now, the prices are really high. I can't imagine them going any higher, but it's, it's possible, certainly possible. We can't rule that out. But remember, when, when we go out for bid on this, the road commission, when it goes, when the bids come back, if it's more than that ten percent over the estimated cost, it'll come back to the board for further direction. The road commission's not just going to automatically accept it. If it's within that ten percent gap that they have, then it will automatically move forward. So there is an opportunity if the costs are just out of hand, that it will come back to the board for decision making.
We have another public hearing and that's when we would say that it's just too expensive right now or what have you.
Right. We, we could have a public hearing at that time.
Right. And the public could be invited, obviously, and you'll know when that is. Okay. Any other comments, concerns? So this is not the end of the road for this. We will have, no pun intended, but we will have another public hearing on this, so there's some more distance to go on this project before, before the shovels get to ground. Okay, I'm going to close public hearing and bring it back to the board. And at this time, I'll seek a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Motion by Ms. Hugo, supported by Dr. Raridan.
Consent agenda?
Yes.
Motion by Hugo.
Supported by Raridan.
Supported by Raridan. Okay, very good. Uh, Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Number eight, old business, our strategic plan update regarding our new DPS and fire facility.
Mr. Sears?
Well, again, so I'll give you just a brief update on the, where we're at with planning for the construction of the new DPS facility and fire station number one, plus the renovation of fire station number two. So last time we were here in front of you, Plant Moran was here with me and we awarded a contract to Detroit Architectural Group to design the new buildings. I'm happy to say that process is underway. We had our first kickoff meeting last week. Myself, the fire department and my assistant director Greg Boggs attended with several members of the architecture group, some of which are out of state. They flew in just for it. What we did is we went through an exercise of basically setting the, the roadwork for how we're all going to work together. We took a tour of the existing facilities that we have here on our campus. And then we all sat down together and we reviewed the space needs assessment that we previously put together with another architect and then what Plant Moran had gone through and reviewed for us some time ago. So that ball is rolling right now. We're getting ready to do some re-tours, I'll call them, because we've already visited some DPW facilities. We're going to go visit them again with the architect that designed them and our architect and Plant Moran. So extra sets of eyes, we can kind of see what works for them and what doesn't work for them. And there are facilities that we really liked before and that we kind of wanted to model after. So I know the fire department's done a lot of tours. Maybe they'll do some more as the time goes on. Hopefully, they'll get to do that. So our next step right now, where we're at, is we just opened bids for construction managers. So this is the person that's going to eventually build the building. We're going to hold interviews next week for them. They're out of, we had a very good turnout. We had six bids come in, which is extremely good. There were at least three local firms in those bids. And the Plant Moran took all that information back and they put it in a matrix and they'll recommend the best three firms to bring in an interview. So we do have an interview team set up for that. They'll come in, we'll spend the day going through that and from there, we'll select a construction manager and we'll bring that book back to the board for approval. And it's, we're excited to get them on the team early because they can help us with price estimates. They can help us with current market conditions, what they're seeing, and maybe some construction alternatives that could save us money later on down the road. So that's where we're at right now with the new facilities. With fire station number two, Chief Perdett's here, but I don't know if you want to take it or if you want me to just keep going? We'll let Chief Perdett discuss it so that he has to get up and do some work tonight, too.
Okay, so station number two, we had a pre-construction meeting with the construction firm E and K Construction, I think it was. Yeah, we're coming back and having another meeting with them a little bit later on this week, but it's still in discussion as to exactly when is the best time to get the project started as far as the shovels into the ground, getting cement set and everything else. But we're well on our way with that right now. Okay?
So what's the timeframe, you think, for?
August two thousand twenty-three is still what we're targeting for. Even if we have any delays right now in starting the construction, the firms, they will be able to meet that timeframe. Okay?
Very good.
All right. Thank you.
Good, thank you, chief. Anything else on construction? Mr. Limina, anything?
No, that's it. I'm just excited that to see the progress that we're moving forward. Obviously, the wheels turn slow, but we're getting there, we're making progress. And again, this was a big discussion, a big part of the fire department strategic plan that they rolled out and put together with their whole team last year. And so it's exciting to see us move forward. You guys have probably all been in the existing one and all you got to do is spend a little time in there and you understand the importance of moving forward like we are.
Sounds like it's making progress at a steady pace, so, thanks, you guys. Great job. Okay, fiscal year twenty twenty-three annual budget discussion. Mr. Limina?
So I watched a meeting that I wasn't at two weeks ago. If fall systems are go, then we intend to move forward for the November fifteenth approval process. We have to get the proper postings out. We'll hold the public hearing, a truth and taxation hearing. Open it up so folks can come in and comment on it again. Hopefully, you guys have all of your questions answered at this point. There are a couple of adjustments we need to make, especially based on my review of your meeting in two weeks ago and then the discussion tonight about the Genesee County Road Commission offer for the ten percent matching funds contribution to any special assessment districts. Because that was not included in your fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget, we can put up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there. And based upon the board's consensus and the conversation I heard, I'm assuming that is a change that you want to see in the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. Seeing no objections, I will make that change. And if there's any other changes between then and now, when we put it in, again, we can make changes on the fly on the day that you're approving it. But if there's anything that you'd like to see in that final copy ahead of time, now's a good time or any time between now and the week prior to the meeting.
Okay, sounds good, Mr. Limina. Okay. Yes.
We, item new business A, I don't, resolution twenty-two dash twenty-four, I don't have it in my packet, but I think, is Melissa getting it now?
Melissa's getting copies, so if, if you want to just move on down to your next item, we'll get copies for everybody before we do.
Read my mind, very good. We need to get past on that for just a moment.
Well, we'll hold off on item A and the resolution for the special assessment district. Just want to keep our audience in suspense for a few more minutes. Item B, the board will consider a motion to approve the purchase of a Cummings generator from Cummings Sales and Service for forty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and authorize the township superintendent to execute all related contracts and documents. Mr. Sears?
Well, again, so this, the purchase of this generator, as highlighted in the agenda note, is in relation to the fire station two renovation project. Right now, the generator that's out there is original to the station. It's, it doesn't run under load very often, so it's had a lot of idle time. And we feel like now is the time to replace it while we're renovating the station. Our architect is, and their electrical staff have done some testing and they feel like it needs to be upsized anyhow with the addition of the building. Even though it's mostly residential use that we're adding, it's still, the generator is going to be slightly undersized for what we're doing. So in order for that unit to remain reliable well into the future, we'd like to replace it now. One change I can tell you we're going to make is that it'll be on a regular exercise cycle. It wasn't previous, so that it'll run weekly, if not bi-weekly, under load so that it's continuously exercising, you know, our mechanics will go out and they'll, they'll check it along with fire department staff and, you know, make sure all the fluids are good, there's no warning lights or anything like that, so.
How many years did we say that current generator is?
That station was built in nineteen ninety-six and it was installed then, so.
Okay. So it's got a few years on it, then?
It does, yeah.
We're renovating it?
The old one will just be scrapped. It's, it's of no value anymore, unfortunately. We've, we've been putting some money into it the past few years to keep it going. It still runs, it'll still run the station as is, but in an emergency situation, we've had, had scenarios where it hasn't started, so on its own.
Okay. All right. Any questions, Mr. Sears? Somebody would like to make the motion?
Make a motion.
Okay. Motion by Trustee Fike, supported by Trustee White.
Okay, it's item seven B. Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Nine B, actually.
Nine B, excuse me, nine B. Thank you for the correction, Mr. Supervisor.
Item nine C, the board will consider a motion for zoning change case number six seven four B. And that's to amend section three dot one dot sixteen dot D for industrial zoning building height to be increased and section five dot one five dot six D for off-street parking spaces to be enlarged.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Smith?
Pleasure where I'm, I've been tasked with updating our zoning book, going through it extensively to make sure that the review process is streamlined and make sure that all of the ordinances make my life easier and make our code enforcement officers easier as well. So in doing that, one of the, two of the things on this first case, like Mr. Bennett had alluded to, is that changing the industrial height from forty to fifty feet and also increasing parking spaces from nine by eighteen to ten by twenty. So those are the first two things on six seventy-four point B. In the industrial district, for the heights requirement, you're going to see a lot of extra height needed in, especially in the Grand Lake Enterprise Park and Tech Village. That's why that one has been requested. And then also with the parking space enlargement, it, it's necessary for our larger vehicles that are hitting the road today. They're not getting any smaller, as everybody's aware, they're getting bigger. So that's just in, in hopes of making everybody's life easier.
Okay. Any thoughts, concerns, questions? Yes, Mr. Laddie?
Just one comment, and I'm sure that, that the board knows this, I don't know if the audience does, but I don't necessarily see your report or your recommendation in the materials, but the planning commission vetted this, had a public hearing on it and made a recommendation for approval. Is that...
Yes, at the July fourteenth meeting, the planning commission recommended approval to the township board trustees, five to nothing.
Thanks.
Okay.
So you know the packet that went out. For whatever reason, it's all in Civic Clerk, like everything, all your materials that you put in there. But none of the supporting materials went with the packet from Civic Clerk. They're all there. But when the packet was pushed, for whatever reason, the attachments didn't go with it. So just so you know.
Okay, right.
So it had the full support of recommendation to us?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Hugo?
I would make a motion.
Okay. Hugo makes the motion, supported by Dr. Raridan.
Supported by Raridan, okay. Uh, Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
All right, Mr. Smith, item nine D. The board will consider a motion for zoning change case number six seven four dot C to amend two point two for daycares, section five dot fifteen dot six dot D for off-street parking space design standards and section five dot nineteen dot three dot A and B for monument and wall signage.
Yes, so the other three items on this amendment, they were recommended by the township board, planning commission to the township board with a seven, nothing vote for the definitions for family and group daycare homes and for the off-street parking. The monument signs were recommended by a six to one vote for the monument... The monument signs were recommended by a six to one vote for the monument and wall signs. So, both were fully approved by the planning commission and recommended for approval to this board tonight. The definitions for the family and group daycare homes in section 2.2 is updating the language that has been approved by the state of Michigan. What it does is for the group daycare homes, it goes from six to seven children maximum, and then, I'm sorry, for the family, it's six to seven, and then the group goes from 12 to 14 children. So, we're just updating the zoning ordinance that says that it goes in line with what the state of Michigan approves, so that way we don't have to come back and change this every time that they change their standards. But just know it goes from six to seven and then 12 to 14 maximum. For the off-street parking space design standards, there was a grid in your, I apologize for why that didn't come through in your packet, but basically, we're changing the parking space requirements to meet in line with the other, the 10 by 20 that you just approved. And then we're also making sure that the parking lane widths are adjusted accordingly. Typically, now a two-way traffic is 24 feet wide, now they're going to be 26 feet wide. And then all of the widths and lengths of all of the parking spaces will be adjusted accordingly as well.
Is that a standard we're seeing, you know, in other communities as well, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the last one, for the monument and wall signs, this is for, in industrial zoning districts that are within 300 feet of I-75, we're asking that the monument signs be allowed to be the height from six to 10 feet in height and the square footage from 75 to 150 square feet in size. For wall signs, depending on the setback, you can have a 32 square feet to 100 square feet. Now, we're asking that the maximum, no matter the setback, be allowed to go up to 100 square feet.
So, Mr. Smith, how does this compare to what we have existing along the expressway? We have a couple of, I know, variances that were granted for some signage, I believe, several of facilities.
Hopefully, this will alleviate the net, the need for any variances. So, any of the frontage properties that will be coming in the future, especially along 75, Grand Blank Enterprise Park, Tech Village, we don't have to do variances, and they can just meet the standards and then go from there.
Well, there, is there a few of them that may come to us and say, hey, I wanted to take advantage of this and use, I don't know if they're at that limit already or if they're under that limit.
I, I have one currently that is, is requesting, if this gets passed tonight, that they're going to be
Okay.
Being able to, Professor Bowman would like a, a larger sign for
Okay.
Visibility.
All right. But I mean, any of the existing signs that are out there that?
Existing signs conform to the standards that are in place today, and were granted variances or not granted variances based on today's standards.
Right.
Hopefully, like I said, going forward, we won't have
Okay.
Different variances.
Okay. Very good. Any thoughts, concerns from anyone?
Is the motion in order, Mr. Supervisor?
It is.
Then I will make that motion.
Okay, and supported by Trustee Fike.
Supported by Fike. Okay, item 9D. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't want to keep the Concord Green folks in suspense any longer, so let's go back to item 9A. And so, the board will consider resolution 2214.
2224.
I'm sorry, 22 dash 24, to create a special assessment district for resurfacing certain roads in the Concord Green subdivision. Everyone has a copy now of resolution 22 dash 24. Any thoughts or concerns?
On this second, or last page?
The last page?
Yeah. These are all properties? Are these all homes?
They are. They represent parcels that are within the special assessment district, and they are, they all have frontage on Kimberly Drive, Kimberly Court, Fairview Drive, Rowland Street, Twin Court, Plymouth Avenue, and Huntley Drive.
Okay. But it wouldn't necessarily, there may be a vacant lot in there, I don't know, I haven't looked at it, but there probably is a vacant lot or two, which, if they have frontage on it, they're part of it as well. Okay. So, these are parcel numbers for those properties?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I see a hand up, but
I would go make one there.
You have a quick question?
No, I was just going to say, I know that there's one vacant property, but the home needs to be purchased, and so
Oh, yeah. We're good. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, so basically, these numbers correspond to properties.
Got it.
Okay, somebody here to make the motion, one way or the other here to? Mr. Fike? Okay. Supported by Ms. Hugo.
Supported by Hugo. Okay, Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Item 9E, the board will consider a motion to approve a sewer system rental agreement between the village of Goodrich and Grand Blank Township with the consent of the Genesee County Drain Commissioner for up to 30 REUs, residential equivalent units, and authorize the supervisor and clerk to execute the agreement. Mr. Limina?
This item is before you, is, is really part of the Kersley Creek Interceptor Sewer Project, and I've been working with the Genesee County Drain Commissioner's Office to be a good neighbor with our friends over at the village of Goodrich and the village administrator over there to come up with some assistance for them to get them through until the Kersley Creek Interceptor Project can be completed. They found themselves in need of about 25 REUs, which we can accommodate and put them on to, we're basically going to rent them space until KCI is completed. One of the requirements that I had for that to move forward was that, that they agreed to participate in the KCI project when they were done and so that we can include them moving forward with the financing of the project. In the meantime, Atlas Township went to the village of Goodrich seeking five REUs because they were over capacity and needed some assistance. So, once I had already worked to the agreement with the village of Goodrich, we just upgraded it, so we're really going to rent 30 REUs to the village of Goodrich. They're going to take 25, and they're going to provide five to Atlas Township for their needs so that they can have capacity. The same requirements apply that they, Atlas Township, had to go through and have their township board approve a motion to participate in Kersley Creek Interceptor Project. When Kersley Creek Interceptor was developed, the REU needs or future sewer capacity of Atlas Township and the village of Goodrich were included in those calculations, but this just ensures that we're willing to be good neighbors and basically lease them some, some sewer capacity in, in exchange for their agreeing to be participants in the KCI project and committing to the future repayment of, of their share of capacity. So, this agreement is coming to you. If you, if the board approves it, it, the equivalent was, the rate, rental rate per unit is $181.35 per year for those 30 units, and if you guys approve it, it will go to the village of Goodrich and then off to the Drain Commissioner's office for signatures.
Mr. Fike?
So, does this assume that Atlas is going to build 25 to 30 homes or businesses that they project that they'll need this water for?
No, they, it's a sewer, and they need the capacity right now to accommodate, they're over capacity with the sewer that they have. They need five REUs to be able to complete the projects that they have right now, and the county isn't going to give them approval unless they have the ability to show that they have the capacity. We do have the ability to, to basically sell this, these 30 units to them or rent these 30 units to both the village of Goodrich and Atlas to accommodate what they, they're billed out right now, but then they're, they're capped. They're not going anywhere until KCI is completed.
And this 181 per year, is that what our cost is?
It's really based upon the original cost of this current sewer project, but it's not like it's a money-making endeavor for us, really. We're, you know, what really changes for us in this rental agreement, it was more important that we had their commitment to participate in KCI and the future costs of that project. This won't impact our capacity. I mean, we're, as you know, we're pretty much built out to capacity in that area, but it's only 30 units, so it doesn't really harm the township at all. The rental costs that we're getting is really nominal, and that was developed by the Drain Commissioner's Office based upon the original cost. You know, the cost of an REU that we're looking at with the KCI project is more like 2,600, 2,800?
Yes.
Yeah, so i- in that area, but this isn't KCI, this is just an existing sewer system.
And when is that going to be finished, KCI?
Well, it looks like everything's moving forward. The, I just had to submit some paperwork last week for the county. We did get that five, additional $5 million that I had requested, so we got our initial $1 million from the county of ARPA funds, then we got the additional $5 million, and I, I sent in a second request on behalf of, really, the Drain Commissioner's Office plus Davison Township, Atlas Township, village of Goodrich, and Grand Blank Township to talk about economic development realities of completing KCI. The county board did approve that $5 million, so in total, we got $5 million that will come off the overall cost of the project. Oakland County approved $10 million of ARPA funds for their part of the project, so the good news is, on a $32.8 billion project, we've got $16 million of ARPA funds towards that project, which is going to be a huge help in bringing the cost down. It's also eligible for low-interest funding that we'll take care of. Instead of having to bond this project, we can really sign the SRF agreement and do low-interest payments on this thing for the next 20 years or 30 years, whatever we determine that makes most sense for us.
Do you know when it's going to be finished?
It's really, I mean, the project should start, you know, we had to get the financing in place. Now, the engineering's already, you know, preliminary engine's been done, they'll start. If it starts in 2023, probably a 2025 project, maybe, Joel?
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Raridan?
Just, so with the REUs, I mean, ours is charging 180-some bucks for the year, correct?
Yeah.
Now, are, is Goodrich or Atlas, are they going to charge the people that are using these REUs? I mean, aren't they more expensive than 181? I mean, when you say, isn't it like 5,000 for an REU?
No, you're thinking more like when you're buying in on capital costs as opposed to what the REU charge is. They're, you know, I don't know what the village of Goodrich or what Atlas Township charges, quite frankly, but really, it's more like a pass-through through the county of what they're doing. The only thing we're doing is loaning capacity that we have. I don't, they're not, you know, I don't think this is a money-making endeavor for them on, on five REUs or 25 REUs, quite frankly.
Well, I mean, i- i- if they were charging 2,000 to their customer and we're charging them 180, I mean, I would just, I would have an issue. Go ahead.
Well, speak, for Atlas Township, that's not what will happen at Atlas. We're, this is just to, this is to allow what was a sort of non-conforming multiple building that needed more capacity than what it was assigned. So, there won't be any infrastructure, there won't be any capital improvements, it's really just capacity in a pipeline at this point in time, and so Atlas isn't going to turn around and sell this for 200, $2,000. It's just going to be a, a real pass-through just to make everything function.
Okay.
No pun intended, right?
Yeah. I do like the idea, I like the term renting sewer capacity, it has a nice ring.
I like that. I'd like to get into that business. Okay. Any other concerns? Okay. Ms. Hugo makes the motion.
Item 9E.
Your support?
Motion by Hugo.
Support by, support by Raridan.
Support by Raridan. Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Okay. Item 10, future agenda items, this is the part that Clerk Robertson asked me to expound upon at great length
[laughing]
in hopes that I will use up the rest of our time expounding on future agenda items.
Just poking a little fun, Mr. Supervisor.
So, anyways, I don't know if the board has anything that you want to make sure we cover, but I, one area that I'd like to discuss in an upcoming meeting is, I know we had talked about beautification a little bit, and I have spoken with a few of the businesses near some of our expressway exit overpasses, and they are willing to cover the cost of, whether it would be using street sweepers to go over those a couple of times a year or every other month, or doing some plantings at those entrances or exits to the expressways, so maybe with a little sign of recognition, but I may recruit a couple of board members to be on a committee for doing that. And I know that, so anyways, with that, Mr. Limina, as far as future agenda items, any thoughts on our strategic plan and what we want to cover at the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I, we'll can bring up anything that you guys want to, you know, hear an update on. One of the things, obviously, that still remains to the forefront of our strategic planning items has to do with the, with the Point North Business District. I think we've got that meeting, we're in the works, we're trying to get that scheduled, if we can get enough of the business owners to attend, because I think that needs to stay
Active.
Front of mind for right now for the board's purposes. And again, if we're going to, if the board is still interested in forming that TIF district besides just a business district, that's something that we need to move on and, and move forward, so that's what my recommendation would be.
Okay. I know Ms. Roberts has been scheduling, looking at scheduling that data, escapes me what date we're looking at, but we'll let the board know what date that is and invite the board, if they would like to attend. Okay, board reports. Ms. Hugo, anything with regard to planning commission report on?
The meeting for November is canceled due to text amendment worksheets forthcoming, and the next meeting is December 1st.
Okay. Very good. Mr. White, anything with zoning, border of appeals?
Actually, I just got an email that said it was canceled. Our November meeting is also canceled, but
Okay.
Anything to discuss?
Mr. Fike, anything with Metro Alliance?
I think you're a reporter.
Okay. Dr. Raridan?
Reference the hiring of, of the police chief. I would actually, if Mr. Limina could explain the general process now that we're down to.
Be happy to. I was going to update the board on that, and we'll, we'll just jump into it right now. Just so you guys know, we ended up with about 27 total applications, and 10 states were covered. It was a very strong field for police chief applicants. Our recruiter, Mr. Walsh, went through and took it down to his top 12, submitted that to me. From that top 12 list, we decided to go after our top four or five. I picked mine, he picked his. There was really only one difference in, in that list. He did all of the initial vetting and then did phone interviews for the initial candidates. We're now prepared to start the interview process. The police committee met on Friday, and so the, the police committee, we went through and reviewed all of the candidates, their backgrounds, their application, went through all of that. We do have the top four to five selected. It's a concurrence of the police committee with the four out of the 12, or five out of the 12 that we selected to move forward. Those interviews will be held over at the police department, starting at 9:30 or 10 o'clock on this Thursday. It'll be a full day. There's 21 questions that'll be asked. They got 45 minutes to respond to those questions. We have two police chiefs, one from the city of Zealand, the other from Saginaw Township, who will be assisting in the panel interviews for those, and then, based upon what we see there, the recommendations, if there was a clear candidate, that recommendation could be moved forward to the board out of that panel. If they need additional interviews or, you know, unable to come to a decision, then we will report that back to the board and probably move it into a second interview or a third interview, as it may be. But if there is somebody who rises above, I can tell you that out of the five candidates, there are two internal and three external candidates. Incredibly strong field. I mean, incredibly strong field.
Yeah. And, and out of the five, I could support all five. I mean, so, the, the, the process that you're describing is that your group will narrow your group will narrow it down to what you believe is the best and then bring it to the board.
Correct.
And out, out of those five, I, I'm, I'm good.
I would concur and, uh, with Dr. Raridan's assessment.
Yeah, and so, and, and in this case, like, we're not gonna attend, at least I'm not gonna attend any of your interviews. This, I think that process really should be with you folks.
I will tell you that the police chiefs that I've invited to, uh, participate as part of the panel interviews were based on recommendations from our recently retired, uh, chief and now Deputy Director of the Michigan Association Chiefs of Police, Ron Wiles.
So we very well could, at our next board meeting, uh, have, uh, a candidate in front of the board.
You absolutely could.
And this board will, uh, make a recommendation, or how does that work, Mr. Limata?
Uh, it's, you know, I'll bring, uh, if there was a clear-cut, um, choice out of the panel interviews, um, then I would recommend that we move forward and we bring this person in for the board, uh, to have the opportunity to meet the individual. Um, and, uh, we can decide then if you're comfortable after, uh, having that opportunity to go ahead and authorize us to, uh, you know, present a preliminary, uh, offer and then start the negotiation process to, to see if we can come to terms with that candidate, uh, to move forward as our, uh, next leader.
And looking through the resumes, uh, with our police committee, uh, last week, I, I can say that I was very impressed with, uh, the candidates, um, the caliber of the individuals that are interviewing. And, uh, it'll be an interesting, uh, day on Thursday with the interviews. Uh, I hope they all do well in their interviews and will make it extremely difficult for you.
I, I, I hope so too. I will tell you that our recruiter, uh, who had just recently completed another, uh, police chief recruitment, said, uh, he was, uh, really blown away by the strength of our field, the field of our candidates. Um, and then, uh, obviously, I shared, uh, some of the information with our former, uh, chief just to make sure that I'm vetting candidates because Ron, as the Deputy Director of the Michigan Association Chiefs of Police, knows many individuals across the state. So I was able to receive some feedback from him as well and in our top twelve list. I can tell you that, uh, he was incredibly impressed by the strength of the field of candidates that we have. We, we really do. We, it's gonna be a tough choice. Um, I'm interested to see how the interviews go, but it is gonna be an incredibly tough choice. I'm really appreciative to the two chiefs who are coming in to assist us, uh, just because from their years of experience in the field and their levels of expertise is gonna be really good as you, as we go through that, uh, Q and A.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so you, you, you hope to narrow it down to just the one, of course. But if, if you think there's, uh, it's real close between one or two, or between two of them, you're gonna bring both of them in?
I'll bring both candidates to the board. Um, if we think that it's clearly, like, you know, we've got two quality candidates and, uh, we'll give you the opportunity to speak with both of them, uh, so that you can make your decision. Like I said, if, if there's a clear-cut candidate who comes out of there, then I'll bring one. Um, if, if it looks like it's close, then we'll bring two, so the board has the opportunity to, to kind of weigh in on both of them, make that decision. A lot of our questions, uh, are gonna revolve around clearly, uh, Grand Blank Township has an incredible reputation, our policing. Uh, you know, you look at the six pillars of twenty-first century policing, um, are so important, or, or community policing. So a lot of that's focused on, uh, how those candidates look at Grand Blank Township, how much they've done, their background and research, and then some ideas on how they're gonna bring us forward, uh, you know, what will they do differently? And again, um, we've got strong internal and external candidates. Uh, no matter who gets it, they're gonna be, um, we can be rest assured that we did a nationwide search and we came up with, uh, you know, somebody who is absolutely, uh, beat the rest of the field in a really tough field. It was hard to get down to four or five. I could have easily probably moved eight or nine of them forward, quite frankly.
Okay. Dr. Raridan? Treasurer Kilmer, anything to report?
No.
Okay. Clerk Robertson?
Um, everything is going well with the election. We have, as of this morning, we had, we had sent out e- eighty-eight-hundred EBSY ballots and we have received, bear with me, I'll get you the figure. Uh, sixty-four percent backs approximately, uh, let's see here.
So it's eighty-eight-hundred more than...
Eighty-eight-hundred were mailed out and, um, let's see. Bear with me.
How does that compare to prior elections?
Uh, I think it's up, as it is all the way. Eight, eighty-eight-hundred out, fifty-six-hundred back, sixty-four percent.
Okay.
Uh, and, and, uh, EBSY ballots are up across the state. Uh, I don't know the precise percentage statewide. Um, obviously, we're open eight to five, Monday through Friday, and we're open this Saturday from seven AM to three PM. So, um, we'll be busy.
Well, you and your staff are to be commended. Your staff, I know, is, uh, you have them working tirelessly.
It is a well-oiled machine, that's for sure.
Yes. So, thank you. Okay, just, uh, a couple of things real quick. The road commission, I know at the last meeting we were concerned with, uh, the selection process. We want to make sure that, uh, someone from a township is selected, uh, for the, uh, county road commission and not somebody from, uh, a city or somebody not within one of the townships being serviced by the road commission. Um, I did attend the county board meeting and, uh, we were assured that a committee will be formed to, uh, vet, uh, candidates for that. And, uh, we brought, you know, our concerns forward. Um, so hopefully, uh, those concerns will be heard. I believe they're gonna wait till after the election to, uh, to have that committee meeting and move forward. So, we'll keep our fingers crossed on that. Um, with regard to, uh, our mission statement, we talked a bit about that. I'm gonna ask Paul and Joel to, uh, if you guys will serve on a committee just to get together and look at a few different mission statements and help draft that for the board to, uh, consider. So, before you take off tonight, let's, uh, schedule a meeting and get that going. Um, we talked a little bit about the beautification, so, um, that's all I have. Attorney Laddie?
Nothing to add.
Okay. Mr. Limata?
Uh, give the board the information. The, uh, bond sale, uh, was completed. The proceeds were wired to the Township, uh, Bank, uh, as of, uh, this morning. So the four-point-one million dollars for the Baldwin Road Bonds, the DDA Bonds, um, that, uh, process is completed. That's great news. Uh, speaking of Baldwin Road, uh, we got word today that we expect it to be paved on November ninth. Uh, so it's targeted for November ninth. Um, the, uh, project was slated for completion by November eighteenth, I think. With the pavement going on on the ninth and especially with this incredibly nice weather we've been having, um, that's great news. The, uh, uh, five-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan update got word today. That was approved by, uh, the state, so that's great. Why is that important? It's because, uh, that allows us to apply for, uh, DNR grants.
Beautiful.
We have to have that master plan approved. We just got it approved for five years. That's fantastic. Uh, especially in light of, uh, we, um, our former Recreation Director, Patrick Linehan, was able to finally mitigate, uh, that cell tower, uh, that's been an albatross around our necks, uh, making us ineligible for grants, uh, for all these years. We did get approval by the state to, uh, they consider that as no longer, uh, an encroachment of public parkland. Um, wasn't an easy process, but, uh, we were able to get through it. So that really opens up some possibilities for us. We're already talking about, uh, a lot of opportunities. We're working, uh, on a SPARC grant, um, right now that also will help us with Parks and Recreation. We can start to combine some of those MNRTF funds, up to three-hundred thousand dollars with other grants, so we can go after trail completion or other aspects of the park. Um, so that's exciting. You know, we've got the passport grant that you can also, a little smaller grant that we can utilize in the park, uh, but that five-year master plan was critical. We got that done. The holiday tree lighting this year, December second, uh, obviously with Director Linehan's, um, uh, departure, we're a little short. We have, uh, gotten in about fourteen resumes for the Parks and Recreation Director. There are at least two of them that I believe, uh, should move forward for the interview process. Um, so we're still making progress there. We're moving it forward, but Parks and Recreation hasn't missed a beat. Uh, we've got a staff meeting tomorrow morning that we're gonna hold out at the Park Maintenance Barn and then we're gonna have some volunteers who are gonna assist our shorthanded Parks and Recreation Department with, uh, putting together some of the decorations for the upcoming holiday tree lighting. Because as a township administrative staff, we believe we're all one team. We all pitch together and help. And when Parks and Recreation is the, the ones who are, uh, low with boots on the ground right now, um, everybody... So if you come in and people are wearing jeans tomorrow, it's because they rolled up their sleeves and put, uh, holiday light displays together out at Bicentennial Park. Uh, finally, police negotiations. As you guys know, we've got three union agreements that are going to expire on December thirty-first. We continue to work through the process. Uh, we have a, uh, non-binding mediation scheduled for November twenty-first. What that means is, we've gone through the negotiation process. We haven't been able to come to terms yet. Um, we, uh, at the suggestion of, of the union, uh, have brought in a mediator. We found a date we've agreed to. Both sides will come in. It's non-binding. It's not like arbitration where i- it's binding on us. It's mediation, trying to find common ground. Um, we're not that far apart on most things. The biggest stumbling block, as, you know, is no surprise we've been talking about, has to do, uh, with the cost of our pension plan. And quite frankly, they can't afford it, uh, and either can we. We just have to find, uh, a happy medium there. I am working with a consultant currently from PFM who does our, uh, investments for us. Uh, they're, uh, experts, or this particular person, she's an expert, uh, in bonding these out. Um, we have to at least explore that possibility if we were to close the, the defined benefit pension plan and put all new hires on a defined contribution plan. We have to see if we can even bond it out. There's some particulars that you have to have in order to, um, issue, uh, pension, uh, general obligation bonds. Number one, you know, kind of, you have to be able to show that you will better your financial position by fifteen percent in order to even consider it. You have to have a, a double A-minus bond rating. Um, so there's other things that go along with it. We want to make sure that we at least have that as a viable option moving forward. So we're working through that right now with some actuaries and putting some numbers together. Um, we should have all that information before we get to the mediation of December twenty-first. Uh, hopefully, I can report back by then and we're, uh, still willing to meet and we may meet ahead of that mediation just to see if we're getting any closer. Um, but quite frankly, I mean, we're, we're, we all agree on what the issues are and what we need to do to fix them. We've already taken care of everything. This whole negotiation has come down to pension. It's, it's what we're gonna do, uh, with the pension, quite frankly. And it's a tough, it, it, it's a, it's a tough question, man. Um, but again, once both sides are agreeing that that is the issue and we need to fix it, we're close. We just, we're just not there yet, but hopefully, we're gonna get it done before the end of the year.
When was the mediation?
It'll be on November twenty-first. That's all I got.
All right, anything else?
He has a motion to adjourn in order, Mr. Supervisor.
Yes.
Then I will make that motion.
Okay, supported by Treasurer Kilmer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay, we are adjourned at eight-twenty-three PM.
Woo-hoo! See everyone, November fifteenth.